Call this meeting to order. The Rockledge City Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, July 18, 2018, and it is 6:00 PM. You want to call the roll, City Card, please.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Yeah.
Councilman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin is absent and excused. Councilman Forrester.
Here.
Councilman Daskey.
Here.
Councilman Hartzell.
Here.
City Attorney Manicklier.
Here.
City Manager Fettro.
Here.
Okay, please stand for invocation. It's going to be by Councilman Hartzell tonight, and I believe he has a special guest for us, as well as remain standing for the flag, salute to the flag afterwards.
I'd like to introduce Father Blake Britton from St. Mary's Church. He's joined us in the last month, and I thought it'd be a good chance for him to meet the city leaders.
All yours, Father.
In the name of the Father, and in the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us here, as many women that you've called to service. I ask that your Holy Spirit's blessing descend upon each man and woman in this room, inspire their hearts to continue providing this vocation of local and community service, in this vocation of politics, and also this vocation of industry, so that our city may grow more deeply in community, in fraternity, and in love. We ask for the Holy Spirit's gift of wisdom, of charity, of courage and fortitude, during this evening of discussion, that all may be done with a deeper desire to foster the bonds of unity within our community in Rockledge. We ask for your Holy Spirit's blessing, in the name of the Father, and of this time, and of the Holy Spirit.
Amen. Thank you, Father. Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Okay, the council has before them the minutes of the regular meeting, June 20, 2018.
What's the pleasure to council?
Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on Wednesday, June 20, 2018.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Come down for presentations.
All right, we got a special recognition tonight for 30 years of service of our employees. Bill, do you want to sign?
All right, Bill, on behalf of myself and the City Council, citizens of Rockledge, and your fellow employees, facing my congratulations for the completion of 30 years of employment service in the city of Rockledge, July, July 1, 2018. Your dedication to duty and your community is evident. I give two, four and a quarter awards to the one who passed. Also, you committed to the wastewater treatment plan, just evident of the natural maintenance of the city's old, and your wastewater department's safety award of 2018. Early in your career, you took control of the preventive maintenance program, saving the city's finances due to potential complications. In times of emergencies, hurricanes, workstation issues, et cetera, you can't be counted on to step up and assist in cases of situation under control, binding, out of factor, etc. Your supervisor has called you to implement wastewater treatment. Plant aid for keeping it running and any efficient violation of the treaty. The city depends upon veterans such as you to help train the effort of making its work within the city. And all the hard work has gone on, that is, has not gone on, I'm sorry, keep up the good work. Please accept these gifts and certificates, commendation, and small tokens. Our appreciation. Here is your award. Here is something for you that's really nice, money line. And Bill, you actually, 30 years of service, you get a special pen. A lot of people get a pen, say, Rockledge, this is a special pen, they hope this for people like you at nine, or the whole, and a lot.
Financial budget report. What's the pleasure to council?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to be in receipt of the financial budget report for the month of June 2018.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings, ordinances, resolutions, there are none tonight. That means this is supposed to be a quick meeting, but sometimes that doesn't always work out. Reports from boards and committees. Who's going to give me that one?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to be in receive the minutes of the following meetings. The Joint Quarterly Meeting, Rockledge Fire, General and Police Retirement Boards, minutes of meetings on May 17, 2018. Code Enforcement Board, minutes of meetings, June 14, 2018. Council Finance and Budget Committee, minutes of meetings on June 19, 2018. Business Development Committee, minutes of meetings on June 26, 2018. Community Redevelopment Agency Board of Commissioners, minutes of meetings, June 27, 2018. And to consider independently any recommendations contained therein.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? See a nun, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Okay, our joint quarterly meeting, no recommendation, code enforcement, no recommendation. Council Finance and Budget Committee, minutes of meeting on June 19, 2018. There's only one person, or excuse me, there's two people on the council here tonight that was not at the budget meeting. Dr. Smith and Dr. Hartzell. I'm going to give you those two credit hours.
Thank you, I'll take those extra credit hours. I did ask for and receive the preliminary budget from the city.
Good.
And had a chance to look at it, thank you.
Okay, our first recommendation is purchase of drone, along with training, licensing, and other related expenses, an amount of $12,000 to be included in the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to include an amount of up to $12,000 in the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget for the purchase of a drone, as well as training, licensing, and other related expenses.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Everybody understand what we're doing here? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Salary increase of 3% for non-union city employees, and authorization for city manager to negotiate a similar increase for union employees. City Manager?
Mayor and Council, just a word about this. As you all know, the CPI, at the time we met as a Finance and Budget Committee, CPI was 2.8, and it continues to increase, as we thought it is now at end of June, 2.9%. And so, for that reason, and a variety of others, as our hardworking staff, I recommended a 3% increase to our personnel. Back to you, Mayor.
Have any questions of the city manager? Looking for a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the salary increase of 3% for non-union city employees, with the understanding that negotiation with the unions will be required, and further move to authorize the city manager to adjust the percentage accordingly, within said negotiations across the board, to monitor pay compensation issues.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Let's move on. And for your information, Janet, this is not something we just saw tonight. We've been, we've been studying this for several months, and this is just the night that it gets voted on, okay? We're trying to train you, I realize that. Number three, authorizing the city manager to adjust the hourly base rate pursuant to the compensation study.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to authorize the city manager to adjust the hourly base rate up to $12 per hour pursuant to the compensation study, and further move to authorize the city manager to handle any compression issues that may arise as a result of said increase. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Number four, recommendation, approval of the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget as presented at the June 19, 2018 Council Finance and Budget Committee meeting, along with the addition of up to $12,000 for the purchase of a drone and related expense. Mr. Chairman. Go right ahead. Go ahead.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget as presented at the June 19 Council Finance meeting, along with the addition of up to $12,000 for the purchase of a drone and related expenses.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that means that for the last six years, our millage rate has gone down.
The last six years, what?
Our millage rate has gone down, if this goes through at this level.
Been six? I think it's been, I don't know how many years.
Longer, that's as far back as my memory goes.
City Manager, do you have it in front of you?
I have at least the last, since 2016, it went from 6.34 to 6.25, 6.20 to 6.15. So, I do believe it's probably at least six years. I don't know if Matthew has record of it.
You're probably right.
Yeah, but it's been several, several years.
Yeah.
Ever since we come out at a great recession, and that's when it started going down. I have a motion, I have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Okay, next one, recommendation, approval of the tentative millage rate of 6.15 mils.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the tentative millage rate of 6.15 mils, and report the same rate to the Brevard County Property Appraiser and the state of Florida. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Now I need somebody to offer the resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Offered a resolution entitled, a resolution for the City of Rockledge City Council advising the Brevard County Property Appraiser of the rolled-back millage rate of the City of Rockledge for the taxable year 2018, the proposed millage rate of said city for the taxable year 2018, and the time and place for the first public hearing on the proposed 2018-2019 fiscal year budget for said city, and move to read the resolution into its entirety.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
Resolution of the City of, of the Rockledge City Council advising the Brevard County Property Appraiser of the rolled-back millage rate of the City of Rockledge for the taxable year 2018, the proposed millage rate of said city for the taxable year 2018, and the time and place of the first public hearing on the proposed 2018-2019 fiscal year budget for said city, be resolved by the City Council of the City of Rockledge, Florida as follows. Section 1, the City of Rockledge has hereby advised the Brevard County Property Appraiser of the following. Visa A, based upon information certified to the City of Rockledge by the Brevard County Property Appraiser, the rolled-back millage rate of the City of Rockledge for the taxable year 2018 is $5.8748 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. B, the proposed millage rate of the City of Rockledge for the taxable year 2018 is $6.15 per $1,000, per $1,000 of assessed valuation. C, the first public hearing to consider the tentative budget for the 2018-2019 fiscal year of the City of Rockledge, and to consider the aforementioned proposed millage rate, will be held Wednesday, September 5, 2018, at 6 o'clock PM in the council meeting room in the Rockledge City Hall, 1600 Huntington Lane, Rockledge, Florida. Section 2, that the Finance Director of the City of Rockledge is hereby instructed to furnish a certified copy of this resolution to the Brevard County Property Appraiser within 35 days of said property appraiser's certification of the 2018 taxable value of properties within the jurisdiction of the set, of the City of Rockledge, passed and adopted at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Rockledge, Florida, this 18th day of July, 2018.
Okay, what's the pleasure to council?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Number six, recommendation, increasing the sewer base rate by 5% from $14 to $14.70. What's the pleasure to council?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to approve an increase of the base sewer rate by 5% from $14 to $14.70, with distribution of the $4.70, $4.70 being split equally between the renewal and replacement and capital improvement reserve funds.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to make one comment, that this is, as is our next item coming up here, these are both enterprise funds, and what we're doing, trying to do is adjust the rate to cover our actual cost. This is not anything that's, it's just related to the cost of the providing the service.
Any other questions, any other comments? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Number seven, recommendation, increasing the usage charge per 1,000 gallons by 5% per year for each of the next three years.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I go ahead, move to approve an increase of 5% per year for each of the three years on the usage charge per 1,000 gallons.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. With these increases, we're still lower than anybody else in Brevard County by a big amount, okay? So if your constituents talk to you about it, you know, pretty much if you were at the Finance Committee meeting, you know why we have $15 million in expenses over the next eight to 10 years. And that's why we had to raise these, to raise the reserve money, so we have the cash for it. Number eight, recommendation, eliminating the 15,000 gallon cap for residential users.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the elimination of the 15,000 gallon cap on residential users. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
The only thing that came to mind, if someone was filling up a pool.
And we discussed that, and that's something they will have to take up with the Finance Director. They have to call him directly and work out some kind of a deal.
Okay. I knew there was provision for it, but.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Number nine, recommendation, increasing the rate of garbage and refuse collection to $14.90.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to approve an increase in the rate of the garbage and refuse collection to $14.90.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Number 10, recommendation, including an additional $25,000 from reserve funds in the 2018 fiscal year budget, as well as allocating $120,000 in the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget for necessary actions related to the future construction of a multi-purpose recreational facility.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the inclusion of an additional $25,000 from reserve funds, in addition to the $50,000 currently included in the 2018 fiscal year budget, and further move to allocate $120,000 in the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget for the necessary actions related to the future construction of a multi-purpose recreation facility. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. 11, recommendation, discontinuing the printing of the city's formal budget document.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to approve suspending the printing of a formal budget document.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Yes, sir, just that people who are not on the Finance Committee need to receive that before we come to this meeting. Something to look at before we come to this meeting, so we're up to speed.
City Manager?
Be happy to do that, Councilman. The budget document that you all got Monday.
Yes.
Certainly intended to put in there Friday, but that's, that's the entire budget that you all got to get this past Monday or something.
Okay.
So, yeah, it was, it was, hopefully you got it in your box, but I sent an email out or called and said it was there and available. So you all did get the budget on Monday.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's a short time. You were done with it on June 19, right? The Budget Committee.
We made our recommendations.
They made recommendations.
As a.
We did some other iterations of it, based on the recommendations, but certainly I can get it out to you all a little sooner, once the Finance and Budget Committee is, is done with it, we have the changes made, we can certainly do that, absolutely.
Thank you.
And I'd be happy to meet with those who are not on Finance and Budget, meet privately, to go through it with you all, to whatever level of detail you would like, as well.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. 12, recommendation, continuing with the city's current investment policy.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve continuing with the city's current investment policy. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Business Development Committee meeting, no, there's no recommendations. Community Redevelopment Agency Board of, Board of Commissioners, minutes meeting of June 27, 2018. Who's going to give me the recommendations?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the contract with W&amp;J Construction for construction of the Civic Hub, in an amount not to exceed $1.78 million.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? That's the property next door that Chelsea cleared. See a nun, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Recommendation, who's giving me the next one?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to authorize the sale of the two parcels totaling .6 acres, in the amount of $219,000, in the 500 block of Barton Boulevard, and further move to authorize the city manager to negotiate any terms and condition, conditions pertaining to the sale of the said property.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. City Manager?
Certainly, once those negotiations are held, should this be approved, I'll work with the city attorney as well, and bring back the contract to council, the CRA board and council, of course.
Do we want to talk about who this is, disclose who this is with, city attorney or not?
It's kind of public at this point.
Have we signed any confidentiality agreement?
We have not signed any NDAs.
Then it's public record.
Yeah, do you want me to? It's Brewster's Ice Cream. They have a current location on 50, State Road 50 in Titusville, and so the owners of that location are interested in having a location in Rockledge as well, and this .6 acre would fit nicely, a Brewster's Ice Cream, right across the street. And so he sent us an offer letter, and so that's up for your consideration.
And everybody knows how the mayor feels about ice cream. All right?
This is supposed to be, I haven't had it, but I hear that it's some of the best to run.
I drive to Titusville to get it.
Mr. Mayor, only question I had is, we purchased the properties intending to create a RMU units over in this side, how does that fit the mix that we're working towards? Well, I think it is an RMU zoning, and they're allowed to do certain setbacks that it would not be allowed to do if it wasn't in an R. Right. That's the reason this property works so well for him, being a small parcel, because he is in an RMU. Uh-huh, and the price that we purchased those properties for, seems like, I remember, a lot of bigger numbers out there.
These two pieces of property were purchased back in April of 2015, and the city, and it had a structure on it at the time, Anthony's. The city did pay $250,000 for those two.
I thought I remembered it was more, I couldn't find it.
So that is, that is accurate, Councilman. We had it appraised, several of the properties to our south appraised, of which this would be the appraised value for those two sites, the current appraised value for those two sites.
Which it's doing what the CRA is designed to do.
Yes, sir.
And now we'll have a new property on there that's going to produce more tax revenue than what was there before.
Right, and ice cream.
And ice cream. Did we vote on that, City Card?
Uh, yes.
Yeah?
We did? Okay.
Did we?
I had to ask.
It was ice cream, he got excited.
Number three, recommendation, who's going to give me this one?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the proposed fiscal year 2018-2019 Community Redevelopment Agency budget.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Okay, unfinished, nope, we should have one more, number four, I'm sorry. Who's giving me number four?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to authorize staff to move available funds in the amount of $930,000 for the funding of the Civic Hub project.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? Everybody know where that 930 came from, and what it's going for? Okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Unfinished business, none today. Consent business, Mr. Daskey.
Yes, sir, move for the approval of these consent business items. First one is declaration of surplus property and subsequent sale of said property for the Public Safety Department. Next is the purchase of a 2016 F-150 four-by-four pickup truck for Public Works Department. Following is request for $500 donation from the Police Forfeiture Fund to the Rockledge Youth Football and Cheerleading League, from the Public Safety Department. And finally, declaration of surplus property and approval of donation of said property for the Public Safety Department.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. This is consent business, there is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. New business, action item, transfer of Haverty Court Temporary Debris Site Sanitation Division to Haverty Court Stormwater Treatment Site, Stormwater Division, Public Works Department. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as the agenda item states, it is currently a temporary debris site. It was purchased by the city in February of 2015 for $204,400, same amount as what is listed tonight, if this gets approved. But the city has never used it for that purpose, and Public Works is recommending this transfer in that it is not needed as a temporary debris site. Therefore, the city could get better use out of it as, in creating a stormwater site and get TMDL credits, et cetera. I did consult with the city attorney to make sure an appraisal was not required, and he said it is not, if council chooses to transfer it from one enterprise fund to another for the original purchase price. Back to you, Mayor.
Any questions of the city manager?
I have a couple. On the map of that area, it shows a, some sort of water feature just to the east of this property.
Yes.
On a different parcel.
Yes.
That's not the one, is that the water, that's not the water feature we've been[1739.12]
in court over the last 20 years, is it?
No, no, that's to the south of this.
It could be another one, but. We avoided that one.
It's to the south of this site.
That's what I thought. Whose property is that adjacent with the one?
One of the owners, it was one of the ones who have been in the lawsuit since 2000.
Okay, I remember that discussion.
Yeah.
All right, never mind.
Okay.
Question two is, at some point years ago, we were discussing possibly moving Public Works over into this area. How does this, how is this involved in that, or is it, or are we no longer even contemplating moving Public Works, or what's the deal?
Sorry, I didn't bring, I have a great big map in my office that I literally just showed the mayor earlier today, but.
We just discussed that same point today.
Yeah, we have several properties in and along this area, there is still several properties, of which the quote "proposed" site to relocate Public Works to is still in the city's ownership, still available, it is to the south of this site, so this would. No, not contiguous and not adjacent, it's literally, I think, directly south of this, but that property would still be available for Public Works to relocate if council so chose, this is a totally separate piece of property. And frankly, as I mentioned to the mayor earlier privately, the, if bright line ever happens, there may be the possibility that Public Works may have to relocate, because if they need more space for tracks, they're likely going to come to the west, and so that would enter into the Public Works campus, if you will, so, but we still have that property to relocate if council ever chose to do that.
Trying to be optimistic about our redevelopment on Barton, that the Public Works property being right off of Barton would be a nice parcel to be able to offer at some point, so.
Agreed.
Okay, I just, I wanted to get my parcel straight, I knew there was two or three things happening there.
Okay.
And a question.
Go ahead.
Temporary debris site, do we have another one picked out?
We do not, I ask, and certainly the Public Works director can speak to it as well, but I talked to him about that, we didn't use it in Matthew, we didn't use it in Irma, the debris was taken directly to the landfill and it worked very nicely, and we pay as we take it to the landfill, so this temporary debris site is just literally not needed.
Yeah, we got there first, I think, everybody else was way behind on the debris.
And that's another good point, councilman, absolutely, we had ours done in 30 days or less.
So we didn't need a holding area?
Correct, we didn't need a holding area.
Yes, great. I'd like to come in on that, because you and I had the discussion a while back, that although we went through these two hurricane events over the last couple of years, neither one of them was really a hurricane, and it makes me wonder, you know, if we got hit with category two or three winds here in Rockledge, there's going to be a lot more debris than we've seen so far, so, something to think, you might need to think of someplace to, maybe the property that we're using, you know, that could be potentially the new Public Works facility, maybe that property could be used, but I really think we should have a contingency plan in case we really get a bad nasty that we can't get everything out to the.
That's a good point, we have, what, 21 acres there, Ken? 15 acres?
I think it is.
At the new, the site we bought for Public Works years ago? That's what we're talking about? Yes. 30 acres in, okay. Yeah. That's a nice site.
At least until we decide to move Public Works there, I don't think it would have hurt to have a contingency plan to use that for debris storage, because, like I said, we, you know, we call these things hurricanes, and the power was out and the streets were flooded, but they weren't real hurricanes.
True.
They could get a lot worse.
I'd be happy to do that, deputy mayor.
What's that? Okay. Did we vote on that, Lisa? We don't have a motion, I'm looking for a motion on the action item.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the conversion of the Haverty Court Temporary Debris Site to the Haverty Court Stormwater Treatment Facility, and authorize staff to make the appropriate transfer between the respective funds.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, action item, emergency repairs to collapsed plant lift station manhole, wastewater treatment department, city manager?
Mayor and council, on June 20th, we had a very critical manhole collapse at the wastewater treatment plant, there was extensive damage to pipes and pumps, it did interrupt our ability to produce reclaimed water and other significant operations. At that point, I, of course, I had consulted with the mayor, but I had declared that an emergency, that's an emergency repair, and the staff evaluated our capability, both with equipment and person power with which to make the repairs, we felt like this was such an enormous job and very significant conditions, if you will, that we reached out to a company on our continuing services agreement and utilized their services, and you can see the full cost of completing that repair in an eight or nine day period of $96,939.73, and we do have money in the budget with which to pay that if council approves.
Anybody have any questions, city manager? I'm sure everybody was advised of this when it happened, weren't they? Did you advise every, all the council?
I don't know that I advised everyone, quite honestly, here, I mean.
Joe Lee was probably traveling, you know how he is, he's always on a cruise.
But we, I did speak with several of them, they knew.
She told me about it between trips.
I was going to say, I did speak with several, I know, I apologize if I missed a person.
All right, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the invoice from Atlantic Development of Cocoa in the amount of $96,939.73 for the required emergency repairs to the collapsed wastewater treatment plant lift station manhole.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Now, petitions for monstrosity and communications, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak, we've only got two people in the audience, so, that would like to speak to their city council about anything to do with the city of Rockledge, it's your turn to come forward if you so choose. About the city of Rockledge, you certainly can, come forward. To the mic. Okay, name and address for the record, you are going to be recorded. Yeah. Go ahead.
I'm a business owner here, and I'm just wondering, is there any plans to expand any kind of retail construction so that my business can grow? I have steps to where I am right now, I don't have any room to grow the business, there's no, there seems to be no buildings that have a sufficient amount of space that's affordable, the brick and mortar stones like myself, to expand. I'm in 2,000 square feet right now, I'm paying close to $3,700 a month in rent, and I need more room, but I don't see any construction or anything anywhere that would be available.
Janet, what I think you're seeing now in this market is, you used to, you know, 20 years ago, even 10 years ago, you saw a lot of speculation building, and I don't think you see speculation much anymore because of the market conditions and also the financing, it's hard to get financing today for speculation building, so you don't see any building going on unless they have an in-use lease already for somebody, and that's what the problem is in new construction, but, you know, there's properties out there that are still vacant, and I think you've got your eye on one of them right now.
We're looking at one right now, but it's going to cost a lot, a lot of money, because it's just a shell.
Yep. But.
Landlord is willing to work with me at any capacity possible, but still, part of the issue is my lease, where I am right now doesn't expire until October of next year. This gentleman is willing, has given me a very generous offer to give me the room to, and the ability to do the improvements, but I have to pay for it.
Right.
There's not even running water in that place right now, so I'm trying to, in some estimates as to how to do this, and I'm going to have to do it in stages. Everybody tells me Barton Boulevard is going to be the thing, I started on Barton Boulevard, so I guess I'm going to go full circle and come back.
Good.
But, you know, any help that the city could offer, I'm ready.
Keep in mind on Barton Boulevard, you're in a CRA district, there is money is available to you from the city, I think it's up to $10,000 of matching funds, so keep that in mind.
And I've been in business 20 years, so it's not, I'm not just somebody that just broke down.
Right. We appreciate you being in business in Rockledge, and look forward, look forward to you being here for a long time.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Could I ask you a question? What is a business that you actually run?
I own Pepros on the road.
Oh, okay, very good, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? See ye none? Let's move on to city manager reports.
Thank you, mayor, a few items tonight, happy to report the city got a letter from the Florida Water and Pollution Control Operators Association, saying, it was on July 4th, saying congratulations, the city of Rockledge wastewater treatment water reclamation facility has been selected to receive the FW and PCOA Safety Award for the year 2017 in the distribution/collection combined category, so congratulations, Jimmy and team. Also, I'm asking for your guidance with regard to the Heritage Foundation, as you recall, Renee, who is now retired from the city, and actually Renee and Cisco were the two board members of the Heritage Foundation, and they've come to me and said, you know, they're, they love the city, they love the Heritage Foundation, but not necessarily interested in continuing to serve, you know, as a board member, and asked if the city might sort of update its documents as well as name new board members, and so if the council might consider that, maybe if so, to direct maybe the city attorney, myself, to bring back the appropriate documents for your consideration on how to kind of update, if you will, the Heritage Foundation structure and format, et cetera.
Joe, there still is a 501(c)(3), right?
It still has a 501(c)(3), it has a bank account, and it can still function as a charitable organization.
That's the only 501(c)(3) the city has, right?
I'm not aware of another one, no, I remember trying to get.
You got us that destination 15 years ago, maybe 20 years ago, I don't know.
Yeah, it was when Mayor Schultz decided that that was a good thing to do, we worked, I worked on trying to do the 501(c)(3) paperwork for the federal government, and found that after four times of giving it to them and having them send it back to me saying it was wrong, I found an accountant who did nothing but that, and I paid for it out of my own pocket to have it done, so, but that 501(c)(3) is a really important thing to have if you have a charitable organization.
Very important.
And you can funnel a lot of different things under that hat, that the city might want to do charitable wise.
Whatever we can do to keep that alive, I think we should, and come up with something, bring it back to the council.
Okay.
We would probably, all we'd really need to do is amend the bylaws, and we've already discussed with the last two continuing board members, they'd be more than happy to do whatever we need to do to make it happen, and essentially, I'll think of some sort of structure, I've been working on it, my, my brain is how we might want to do it, but give us a great deal of flexibility with what we put underneath of that hat.
Good. Thank you.
May I, okay, ma'am, just want to confirm also with council, the council budget workshop is on August 1st, and I want to make sure, last year we held it at 5:30 PM, I just wanted to make sure that 5:30 PM is okay with everyone, on Wednesday, August 1st, everybody? Okay, so then we'll do 5:30, just making sure. And lastly, I just wanted, not necessarily formally, but ask council, of course, we are in hurricane season, and hopefully we won't have one, but you all recall last year about the declaring or the declaration of a state of emergency, that has no impact, Brevard County has to declare the state of emergency, not necessarily each city, although in hindsight, we probably could have or would have done that, but I just want to make sure that if, for example, we don't have another council meeting till August 15th, so if next week a hurricane starts and approaches, gets named and so forth, if I was to call each councilman and woman in advance to get a, hopefully a verbal yes, to allow me to declare a state of emergency, and then bring it back formally to whenever the next council meeting is, I just wanted to get a sense of if that's okay with you all, assuming I call each of you individually, and if you all say yes, to do that, so this city would be in line with what other cities are doing, again, it's not hurting us one way or another, but the citizens would seem to like it.
At the city level, what difference does it make if we declare a state of emergency?
It doesn't, that's what I'm saying, it does not. To receive official FEMA declaration, it's not required, Brevard County and every county in the state is the declaratory body to declare a state of emergency, but the 15 other municipalities in Brevard just did so, so.
We were the only one that didn't.
We were the only one that didn't bear.
And so they looked at us like, what are you guys doing? And we don't need to do it.
We don't have to, but people were, you know, very stressed out, understandably so, were like, why didn't you do that? It doesn't mean anything, but I just thought, to ease our citizens' minds, if y'all would allow me to call you all, and if you all say yes, I would do that, and then formally bring it back to the next council meeting.
I'm with you.
Sure. Everybody okay with that?
Okay, okay, thank you, mayor, thank you, and that concludes my report, mayor, thank you.
City Attorney litigation report, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to be in receipt of the city attorney litigation report dated July 1st, 2018.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, Mr. City Attorney.
Because of the size of it, there's not much to talk about.
Yeah, you only got one page left, that's absolutely amazing.
If it wasn't for the one with the league attorney that's handling it, we'd only have my old friend. But, I don't know, really know what the reason why, other than the change in the statutes as to forfeitures, because we were doing a lot of those, but the state legislature saw it totally different than reality, and changed it so that essentially you can't afford to do forfeitures any longer, unless you have a lot of money involved, which did happen about 20 years ago, there was a truck, a flat, pickup truck that was stopped by the Brevard County Police Sheriff's Department, and when they looked underneath the flatbed, there was $3 million of cash stacked up, and lo and behold, the driver suddenly disappeared, and so they had, it was forfe, that was a forfeiture case, but they are, they're out there.
He funded one of those.
But that's the reason why, you know, that and everybody's making sure they don't break anybody's leg. Other than that, I really don't have anything else to pass on, just one thing on the debris.
Yeah.
The reason why our debris disappears so fast is because of what the staff, Ken Poole and that bunch have done, we have, and you approved all of these contracts with the contractors who he can call upon to, and the city manager, to get them out there and cleaning things up, that's, that's all the grunt work already done, you know, they just, they just come out and do it, and we pay them, and then we get our money back from FEMA, that's one of the biggest things, some of these cities, you know, they take weeks and weeks to find people to do it, but that was, that's Mr. Poole and his bunch, because they did a great job planning those things.
They hire our, they hire our guys after we're through with them.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. No, because they, the people that we do have in the contract know that they're going to get paid.
Right.
And that's always a big problem when it comes to doing that kind of work, when the check comes due, they don't have the money to pay it.
Yep.
Other than that, I will, I just, personal thing, on the 25th of this month, I will be out of pocket for that entire day, won't be able to get a hold of me, I will not be back, you can get me on my phone probably the next day, the 26th, and I'll be available if anybody needs it, I've got to have some back surgery done.
Ooh, God.
Piece of cake.
All right, glad you think so.
Positive thoughts, right?
Yeah. My knee was bad enough. All right, let's report from the diocese, city clerk, you okay, city attorney?
Nothing else.
Dr. Hartzell, two more credit hours, he'd be a PhD, so I'm giving it to him early.
I'm actually professoring, so I really could use that little bit more. Yeah. An ing on the end, I got to be an ing in here, you know, too many, too many syllables. The, my, I had fun at the 4th of July picnic, that was a blast, it was hot, but you go, 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 and just get out and see people, and that's what Rockledge is about, I did have a complaint from, someone was trying to do some political campaigning, and I need to. I need to follow up on that, but I just put it off to one side now. Everything's good. The fireworks, unfortunately, it got cut half short with the symphony. The rainstorm came in, and I appreciate Coco's taking good care of the people who were there because they put me in a nice spot right behind Porsche House, but then they blocked the roads with sand-filled trucks, so nobody could come driving through and into the area. So I couldn't get out for about 45 minutes after the fireworks. They had to get, get somebody out there and move the trucks. It's just interesting how things like that work.
Yep.
And now you gotta be careful. The, let's see, last Friday, I guess it was, we went to Beechey Nutrition. They had a nice shake there. New, new business right down at the end of Florida Avenue, and you go down the hump towards railroad tracks.
Yeah.
Yeah? That's, I think I'm gonna be doing that. That, that was good for me. And then we had Space Coast League of Cities meeting, and there was a long presentation by a gentleman from the Housing Department at, for the county. And something that always astonishes me is that the housing that's done, in Rockledge included, especially in Rockledge, apparently we have some special relationship with that organization that I hadn't explored too much. But they are only budgeted with 20% of their budget. The other 80% is grants. And having to reach out and find places and things to do and get their job done, when I was on the budget, Citizen Budget Advisory Board for the county, I was astounded at that, and I tried to follow up on it then, and it was just a tangled mess. They, just having to write grant after grant after grant, just to keep doing the job that needs doing. So if there's anything we can do to help them accomplish their tasks and do it right, sort of guide them a little bit. I think sometimes they just bulldoze their way into doing things, and they could probably use some guidance in doing that here in Rockledge. A good working relationship for them might be a value, a value to us. In the meantime, that is probably the best venue I've ever seen for a, a meeting of that type. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Smith?
I pass, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Ferguson?
Good evening, everyone. I was at the Space Coast League of Cities as well. Great opportunity to be with other officials at the Galley Yacht Club on, on the 9th of this month. Secondly, and lastly, is on tomorrow evening, held at Faith Temple Christian Center, only as a host, is the Rockledge Connect Meeting. That Rockledge Connect Meeting is a collaboration of principals, local principals, some of